Thank you, everybody. I'd like to call this meeting of the Sterling Heights City Council to order. If you would, please stand with me for the Pledge of Allegiance. Remain standing for the invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Dear God, please bless our elected officials. Grant them courage and wisdom to do what is right for all citizens. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Ms. Ryska. Can we please have the roll call?
Mayor Taylor.
Here.
Mrs. Saroski.
Here.
Mrs. Kosky.
Present.
Mr. Radke.
Present.
Mrs. Schmidt.
Present.
Mr. Yannis.
Here.
Mrs. Yarco.
Present.
Thank you, Council. We need approval of the agenda tonight.
Mr. Mayor.
Mrs. Kosky.
Move to approve the agenda.
Support.
They're moved and supported. Any discussion? No discussion. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Before we get started tonight, I'd like to say that we are holding tonight's meeting in accordance with both state and federal guidelines. As I'm sure everyone has heard by now, the Michigan Department of Health and Human Services has revised its face mask requirements to be consistent with the CDC guidelines for vaccinated people. As such, those who have been fully vaccinated do not need to wear a mask at this meeting. If you've not been fully vaccinated, we ask that you please keep your mask on. As face masks are still required for anyone in the audience who has not been fully vaccinated, unless you are exempt from wearing a face mask for other reasons that are authorized by the Michigan Department of Health and Human Services, including, but not limited to being medically unable to tolerate a face mask. This is obviously a great step forward that we've been looking forward to for a very long time and is a testament to why vaccinations are essential to all of us getting back to normal. So you will notice the city council members, employees, administration, even though vaccinated, continuing to wear a mask when moving about. And we ask if you are moving about, to continue to wear your mask. For now, due to the state Miosha rules, that remains in effect and have not, the Miosha rules have, are remaining in effect and have not caught up with the current CDC guidelines. So given that not everyone has been fully vaccinated, we still ask you to remain seated during the meeting, to the extent you can, and continue to wipe down the microphone after you use it at the podium, both before and after you speak. And we do still have, in the back of the auditorium setup, an area where if you're not fully vaccinated and you want to remove your mask, it is safe to do so back there. It'll be up to council members, I suppose, if they want to wear a mask or not wear a mask. I'm going to remove my mask as we're all socially distanced. I'm fully vaccinated and I'm comfortable that the CDC guidelines indicate that it is safe to do so for people who are fully vaccinated. So a great, great news and a great step forward. So with that, we'll move on to the next item on our agenda, which is a report from our city manager, Mark Vanderpool. Mr. Vanderpool.
Thank you very much, Mayor. Let me start out with a timely event that's going to occur tomorrow morning at dawn, which is about 6:05. There's going to be two areas of the city that will be sprayed for gypsy moth suppression. And the areas are right around sixteen and a half and Seventeen Mile Road. I'll show them on a map here shortly. This will be done via aerial application by a low-flying plane. And again, that's tomorrow morning at dawn. The timing does depend on weather conditions, but the weather looks very good. The wind should be calm, so we don't see this being moved to Thursday. But let me just pull up the slide here, and while I'm doing that, I want to point out that this spray is not harmful to humans, pets, birds, fish, butterflies, plants, and other beneficial insects, other than the gypsy moth. So if we don't do this spraying, we risk long-lasting harmful effects to the forestation in these areas. So for the last few years, we've been conducting this aerial spraying. There's about ten communities in Macomb County that is participating in this program. It's run by Michigan State University Extension Office. It's a highly credible program and very regulated, the aerial spraying part of it by the FAA, so residents can be assured that it is safe. However, it will obviously be noticeable, and I would imagine some may be awoken by it tomorrow. So this is one area. You can see this is on Dodge Park, just south of Plum Brook, and right around, and south of Seventeen Mile Road, east, excuse me, west of Dodge Park. So it goes a little bit south of sixteen and a half, up to Seventeen Mile, over to Dodge Park. So you can see that outline there. There's about three hundred and eighty-nine homes in this area, just under two hundred acres. And you can kind of see some of the tree-lined area in there that, that will be sprayed. The plane will be, you know, is higher than the trees, obviously, so, you know, could be a couple hundred feet, maybe even a little lower in some spots. And then this is the other area. This would be just northeast of that section, east of Dodge Park, Seventeen Mile running through the middle there, and eastward toward the ITC corridor. And there's a number of tree-lined areas in here that will be sprayed. The spraying will be pretty quick, and it's just a one-time spray. There won't be any more spraying done this season, and then we'll have to move on to other areas of the city next year. So I wanted to call that out to everyone's attention. It certainly will likely generate some interest. If you want to learn more about this program, you can go to macombgov.org and simply search in the search box for the gypsy moth suppression, and you'll get a full background of the, the spray content and, and all that the spraying does. So moving on to the next item on my report, I'd like to talk about the Memorial Day holiday coming up. In observance of Memorial Day, city offices will be closed for business on Monday, May thirty-first, just around the corner. That includes our City Hall, Public Library, Parks and Recreation Center, Community Center, Senior Center, Nature Center, DPW, Recycling, and Forty-One A District Court. Obviously, it would not include police and fire. They work twenty-four, seven. Normal business hours will resume on June first. There'll be no refuse collection on the thirty-first, so each day will be delayed, and then Friday will be picked up on Saturday. Any questions the community may have, just simply call four four six city or visit our website. And then we encourage residents to join us virtually. We can allow some in person, but we do have some attendance limitations on the Memorial Day tribute, which is the thirty-first, as we honor our local veterans and others. Our morning tribute begins with a brief ceremony, beginning at nine AM, just in front of the police station, including remarks from the Grand Marshal, Sharon Allen, Sterling Heights elected officials, congressional officials, and, and a special unveiling of the newly renovated City Hall Memorial Garden, which is looking absolutely phenomenal. So we'll be unveiling it, and it'll, I think, be just a point of pride for the community for decades to come. We'll follow the ceremony with a short Memorial Day cruise at ten AM. This is not the traditional parade, obviously, for, for the reasons we're living under still. We expect to return to the normal parade next year. But the cruise will consist of about seventeen, sixteen to seventeen vehicles, including police and fire apparatus and, and other vehicles, and veteran vehicles, and so on. And they will travel through the neighborhood of the winner from our Young Artist Contest. And you can find all of that on our social media page, Facebook, and Twitter, and the like, along with our website, to learn exactly where the route is. You can certainly go out in your yards and watch the, the cruise go by. Again, spectators are welcome to join us for the ceremony, but there will be limited capacity, so we may have to move people back and disperse some if there's a larger crowd. So I would like to say, though, the event will be streamed live on Facebook, so you can watch it, and we encourage you to do that. And also, speaking of Memorial Day, I wanted to once again remind the community of the fireworks law that's in place in the state of Michigan, because the first day that fireworks can be used legally is the Saturday and Sunday immediately preceding Memorial Day. You cannot use fireworks on Memorial Day. The other period of time, you can use it in the summer, use fireworks, that is, is from June twenty-ninth through July fourth. And so obviously, those dates are, are coming up. For those that do use fireworks, you can only use them eleven AM until eleven forty-five PM, and only on private property with permission of the property owner. Spectators must be twenty-five feet away, and you can't violate any other codes that, that are being enforced at the time, including disturbing the peace if it's during non-hours, and depositing litter and so on. We do the best we can to enforce this. Periodically, we confiscate fireworks that are not being used properly. We do issue violations periodically, so, you know, if you, you don't follow the rules, you do so at your own risk. But any other days, other than those that I just mentioned, are not permitted in Sterling Heights, so you can only use fireworks on those days. And Mayor, I'd like to now take this opportunity to introduce the president of the Sterling Heights Area Community Foundation, Carl Escoian, who's going to talk about the scholarship award program this year and some of the awardees that were recipients. Thank you.
Thank you, City Manager Vanderpool, and thank you, Mayor Taylor, and thank you, City Council. The Sterling Heights Area Community Foundation is proudly celebrating its thirtieth year serving the Sterling Heights area community. On behalf of the foundation, I'm proud to share some information about the foundation and its twenty-twenty-one annual scholarship awards program. The foundation was established, as you all know by now, in nineteen ninety-one to strengthen the quality of life of Sterling Heights area residents by improving their cultural, educational, and recreational opportunities. The foundation strives to achieve its mission by continually generating contributions and income that support the implementation of mission-related programs, projects, and activities that reach a wide segment of the community, and by helping to foster a community-wide philanthropic environment through partnership and collaboration with area businesses, companies, citizens, and other nonprofit organizations. Our foundation partnership effort is visible in our twenty-twenty-one scholarship program as our nine sponsorship partners are awarding a total of eighteen scholarships worth eighteen thousand dollars. This marks the twenty-third consecutive year that the foundation and its sponsoring partners have awarded scholarships to area youth pursuing degrees in higher education or vocational training. The foundation began awarding scholarships in nineteen ninety-nine and has awarded scholarships to four hundred and eighty-two area students totaling four hundred and thirty-two thousand dollars, including this year's twenty-twenty-one awards. The Sterling Heights Area Community Foundation partner organizations awarding scholarships in twenty-twenty-one are BAE Systems, General Dynamics Land Systems, the Macomb County Chiropractic Association, the former Mayor Richard J. Nady Endowment for Government Public Service, the Ronald Himmler Science Scholarship, Rotary Club of Sterling Heights, the Selfridge Area National Guard Base Community Council, the Sterling Heights Area Community Foundation, Mark, the Sterling Heights City Manager Professional Public Management Scholarship, and Vibe Credit Union. Each year, the foundation receives many strong scholarship applications. Scholarships are awarded based upon each sponsor's unique requirements, which include academic performance, leadership, community service, and career plans. The foundation looks forward to this program every year, as we are proud to support some of our community's finest students continue their academic growth. On behalf of our foundation's scholarship selection committee, I congratulate each of these twenty-one students our foundation and our nine scholarship partners are awarding this year. Now, the scholarship selection committee had many highly qualified applicants to evaluate for each scholarship being awarded. The task, as you could probably imagine, was not easy, and that says a lot about the quality of students and the school system in our community. All applicants received a very high grade point average. Most of them were over four-point-oh. Applicants participated in many school and community activities and took a leadership role. All expressed a strong desire to continue their education and set very high expectations for their career. The Sterling Heights Area Community Foundation is thankful to its scholarship partners who continue to demonstrate their passion for education and the youth of our community through their support of this annual core foundation educational program. A video of our twenty-twenty scholarship program announcing all twenty-one award winners by their sponsorship organization will premiere via a Facebook watch party and on YouTube tomorrow, May nineteenth, at six PM. The Sterling Heights Area Community Foundation twenty-twenty-one scholarship program video will continue to be available on demand on the city YouTube channel, and it will be rebroadcast on Sterling Heights TV, beginning Thursday, May twentieth, through Friday, May twenty-eighth, at six PM each day. An article will also appear in the Sterling Heights Fall Quarterly Magazine. I encourage all who are interested to view the video for a look at some of the tremendous young people who reside in our community. These students are making a positive difference in their community, and they're on their way to making a very positive difference in our world. The Sterling Heights Area Community Foundation and scholarship partners are very proud of our twenty-twenty-one scholarship awardees, and we are fortunate to have the opportunity and the ability to assist them continue their education. Thank you, Mayor Taylor. Thank you, City Manager Vanderpool. Thank you, council members, for allowing the Sterling Heights Area Community Foundation to share its annual scholarship program with you and for your ongoing support of the Sterling Heights Area Community Foundation. Good evening.
And Mayor, it's always good to end on giving money away, so I'm glad to say that concludes my report. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much, Mr. Vanderpool, and thank you very much, Mr. Escoian. It's good to see you here. Every year, around this time, we look forward to that awards presentation, or scholarship presentation, I should say, and hoping we'll have that back next year in twenty-twenty-two. Thank you again. With that, we'll move on to the next item on our agenda, which is, we have, well, we have three presentations tonight. The first presentation is a swearing-in ceremony for new Sterling Heights police officers. We have a presentation from our fire chief, or from our police chief, Dale Dwojekowski. Chief?
He's putting out fires now, too. Good evening, Mayor Taylor, members of council, Mr. Vanderpool. Another great night. We haven't done this in a while, but a swearing-in, new officers. They keep on getting younger. I keep on getting older. Brooke here is twenty-one years old, and I've never felt so old. But again, Sterling Heights is very, very fortunate. While many departments struggle to get any candidates, some of my police chiefs that I, I talk with and we have lunch, they say they got zero applicants, zero. This is what's going on in the field as we speak. With COVID, the police academies are running at half-capacity, about twenty-five students, so we're going to have a shortage of police officers. Oakland Police Academy and Macomb Police Academy had the same problem. And I'm proud to say we are still getting applicants. We still have officers coming here. Almost every single one of our officers that works here now left a jurisdiction to come here to Sterling Heights to be a police officer. That speaks volumes about our city, about our police department, and I couldn't be any prouder. And tonight is no different. We have a couple new recruits right out of the academy. In fact, I was just at Max's graduation last week, so super fresh. And then Jonathan from Auburn Hills. But I'll start from the left there. Officer Jonathan Jurnau. He has a bachelor's degree from Saginaw Valley. He was a police officer in Auburn Hills since two thousand and eighteen, and he left Auburn Hills, great department, great city, to come here to Sterling Heights. And a funny thing about Jonathan, he could pretty much walk to work. He lives a couple hundred yards away from the police station. He is a Sterling Heights kid, Stevenson graduate, so we love getting these local kids that know Sterling Heights. And he literally, the poor kid's never left a hundred-yard circle of Stevenson, his house and the police station. So we're happy to have him. I know when I met him the first day when he came in, he was on cloud nine when he landed this job. And again, that speaks volumes after doing three years with Auburn Hills, so we couldn't be any happier. Next, in the middle, is Officer John, we call him Max Kretschmar. So Max Kretschmar, just bachelor's degree from Alma College, and he was a twenty-twenty-one, like I said last week, we just had a graduation from the Macomb Police Academy. I know Max's dad, retired Rose Plain Park lieutenant. His mother is an Oak Park lieutenant. They're here tonight with us. So comes from a strong police family, and we're very fortunate to have him. And on the far right, Brooke Crassa. She just finished from Ferris State University, and our old lieutenant that is running that academy and that class up there sends us some awesome recruits. We are very, very happy. Cecil Queen. She just finished from Ferris State, and again, twenty-one years old, or she's so excited to be here. Every time I see her, you can just see the energy. They want to be here, and we couldn't be any happier. So with that, I'll take this microphone out. Aye, state your name.
I am Jessica.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And that of the state of Michigan.
And that of the state of Michigan.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of police officer.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of police officer.
In and for the city of Sterling Heights.
In and for the city of Sterling Heights.
And that I will strive to maintain the highest standards of that department.
And that I will strive to maintain the highest standards.
To the best of my knowledge and ability.
To the best of my knowledge and ability.
Congratulations. All right. I'll have each of our new hires come up here and start by saying a few words. Jonathan, you want to come up here?
Hello, my name is Jonathan Jurnau. I'd first like to thank you guys for the opportunity, as well as the Sterling Heights Police Department, for giving me the opportunity to be employed here and, well, return home. I'd also like to thank my family and friends here. They supported me throughout. You know, they helped raise me, get me to where I am now, and I wouldn't be here if it wasn't for them. But just like I said, I'm excited to work here. This department is actually the reason why I got into law enforcement. The actions by some officers made a huge impact on my young life growing up, and I've just decided to be working here and give back to the community that gave me so much. So, thank you, guys.
Thank you. Next, Officer Max Kretschmar.
Hello, my name is Max Kretschmar. I'd first like to thank the city of Sterling Heights for this opportunity to work at this great department, this great city. Growing up, having two police officers as parents, my dream has always been to be a police officer, and having the opportunity to start my career in a city and a department like this has been a blessing for me. And I couldn't thank my family enough, because without them and their enthusiasm and support, I wouldn't be here. So I'd like to thank the city again and thank my family for this opportunity.
Thank you. And Brooke Crassa.
Hello, everyone. I'm Brooke Crassa. I just want to say I just want to say thank you for giving me this opportunity to be here today. We didn't have a graduation at the Ferris State Police Academy, so it's awesome that we get to do this here today. And I would like to thank my friends and family for supporting me endlessly throughout this process. It's been a long journey, but I'm glad I'm finally getting to my dream job. Thank you.
Thank you. And with that, I would like to thank council again for not only supporting the police department time and time again, but we're also so excited about the seven new hires that we're going to be adding to the police department next year. Your dedication, devotion to public safety speaks volumes with your actions, and tonight is an example of that. So I appreciate this council's support and the city's support with everything. And at this time, I'd like to turn it over to council for any words.
Okay. Thank you very much, Chief. Counsel, anyone have any comments they'd like to make? Mayor Protim Sarowski?
Thank you, Mayor Taylor. So, welcome and congratulations to our new officers. Officing, officers and police office, police officers always hold a very dear place in my heart. My son is a major in the Marine Corps, and he is of military police. So he always wants, his dream job is to come back here someday and maybe find a job in law enforcement somewhere here. So I always really look to the young and the new officers to see, just say thank you and to see how well we're doing. You guys are great, and I'm so excited. And John, I am one of your neighbors. I live on William Drive, so I think we're extra safe now, so I'm welcome, and I'm very happy to have you. Thank you.
Mr. Radke.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Chief, I just have to say I'm always so impressed by the candidates you bring us here in Sterling Heights. We've had so many conversations about how we've struggled to find candidates, but you seem to find the most top-notch individuals. I'm so excited they have degrees and experience, and they're going to be a great addition here and help make our department even better because we have the top-rated department in the state, and you're not going to bring us down. So thank you so much for coming, and best of luck and stay safe out there, okay?
Mrs. Koski.
Thank you. Welcome. We're very pleased that you chose Sterling Heights for your police officer career. I always know that you have the support of this council because we believe in giving you the proper equipment that you need to keep yourself safe so that you can do your job and keep our residents safe. So I wish you well, and again, thank you.
Counsel, anyone else? Well, on behalf of all of the residents of the city of Sterling Heights, we want to welcome you aboard to this police department. As Officer Juro, is it? Jurnow stated, this is a police department that's for a long time had a reputation of excellence. And as each new generation of officer comes on, they've continued that tradition, and they've continued to provide the highest level of service of any police department in the state of Michigan and perhaps the entire country to the residents of our city. And I think what you'll find to the, to the two newer officers who maybe don't have the same history with the city of Sterling Heights, you're going to find that our community loves you. Our community supports you. Our residents are there for you because you're there for us. So we want to thank you. Thank you for choosing this profession. It's a dangerous profession. Just yesterday, was it, Chief? We celebrated or commemorated Law Enforcement Day in the city of Sterling Heights, where we honored officers who have made the ultimate sacrifice. And we know that we're, our lives are better off because of the service that you're making to this community. So we thank you deeply from the bottom of our hearts for what you do, and good luck to you. Godspeed, God bless. And to the family, thank you for what you've done to bring them here to us. I know, I always like to hear, we hear it a lot more in the fire department, where you have a legacy of firefighters and, and children and grandchildren, but to hear that an officer is following the path that their parents did, it's really great to see that. And it, to me, when you, when you have that sort of passion and you have family background, you know, I just know that we're going to get the best out of the three of you, and our residents are going to be the beneficiaries of that. So thank you again. God bless. Why don't we give them one more round of applause, and then we'll take a... I'm sure, I'm sure the family wants to go take some pictures, maybe go get some celebratory dinner, maybe. So we'll take about a five-minute recess so the family members can go, and you guys can go celebrate. Well deserved. Thank you. Five minutes recess, we'll stand in recess.
Thank you very much for that. We will call the meeting back to order and move on to the next item on our agenda, which is to adopt a resolution designating June 19, 2021 as Juneteenth Independence Day in the city of Sterling Heights. We have a presentation from Eric Hawkins, member of the Sterling Heights African American Coalition. Mr. Hawkins?
Good afternoon, everyone. Mayor Taylor, Council, City Manager Vanderpool. My name is Eric Hawkins. I'm a four-year resident of Sterling Heights and a member of the African American Coalition. And I want to thank you guys for allowing me to come out to talk about the Juneteenth Resolution. And also, as a side note to congratulate the officers, I don't know if they're still here or not, but huge milestone. You're the best guys as well. So I'll go ahead and start. Juneteenth Independence Day is recognized throughout much of the country as the date in which slavery came to an end in the United States. President Abraham Lincoln first issued the Emancipation Proclamation on January 1, 1863. This act freed many of the slaves in the South, but did not apply to certain slave-holding states, including the state of Texas, till after the end of the Civil War. The Civil War effectively ended on April 9, 1865, with the South surrender at a Virginia courthouse. News of the end of the Civil War and the Emancipation Proclamation did not reach frontier areas of the United States, such as Texas and many of the other southwestern states, for nearly two months and more than two and a half years after the proclamation was first issued. On June 19, Union soldiers led by Major General Gordon Granger arrived in Gaveston, Texas with news that the Civil War had ended and read aloud General Order Number 3, which reads, "The people of Texas are informed that in accordance with the proclamation from the executive of the United States, all slaves are free." Since then, African-American communities have recognized June 19 as Juneteenth Independence Day, which is a day for celebration, inspiration, encouragement, and remembrance. The faith and strength of character demonstrated by former slaves and the descendants of former slaves remain an example for all people of the United States, regardless of background, religion. Today, Juneteenth Independence Day continues to celebrate African-American freedom and achievement while encouraging continuous development and respect for all cultures. The city of Sterling Heights is guided by its 2030 Vision Statement, which reads, "A vibrant, inclusive community for residents and businesses that is safe, active, progressive, and distinctive. Sterling Heights: A bold vision for an exceptional quality of life." Consistent with this vision, Sterling Heights is one of the first communities in the region to join welcoming Michigan to foster a more diverse and inclusive environment, and has taken the following steps to enhance racial equity of African-American residents, including but not limited to: hiring the area's first-ever African-American police chief, who served from 2000 to 2006; hiring more African-American employees; and establishing the first-ever African-American Coalition. In this spirit, the city of Sterling Heights celebrates and asks that Americans of all colors, cultures, religions, and countries of origin share a common respect for love and freedom. Also, to recognize what the Juneteenth Independence Day historically means to the United States and all Americans by promoting healing, reconciliation, sincere discussion, and reflection. And I would like to, again, just thank you all for allowing me to speak on this. And I think, as a resident, this is very impactful and really encouraging to see that the city's taking steps to, you know, encourage inclusion and just to recognize all the different ethnicities and cultures, and really appreciate that.
Thank you very much, sir, Mr. Hawkins. I do appreciate you coming up. What I would like to do is I'm going to come down and present the resolution to you, okay? And then we'll come back up here and we'll vote on the resolution after I present this. All right, Council, we do have a resolution here?
Mayor Taylor?
Mrs. Saroski.
Thank you, Mayor Taylor. Resolved to adopt the resolution designating June 19, 2021, as Juneteenth Independence Day in the city of Sterling Heights.
Support. It's been moved and supported. Is there any discussion?
Just very briefly, thank you, Mayor Taylor.
Mrs. Saroski.
Thank you, Mayor Taylor. So this is something that's wonderful, and I'm very happy that Mr. Hawkins came. Thank you, Mr. Hawkins, to give us a little bit more of a history, gives it, makes it more real to the residents. Most important thing that we need to always remember is it doesn't matter what our color, our creed, our race, religion, background, country of origin, this is a day for all Americans to remember and to celebrate, because this is a day very significant in our history when finally slavery was absolutely 100% abolished and it was celebrated. So I'm very happy that we are able to do this. It is just a good day, and so, thank you very much. Thank you, Mayor Taylor.
Thank you, Mrs. Saroski. Council, anyone else? Just to echo that, thank you, Mr. Hawkins, for coming and presenting that to us, and appreciate it, and I'm happy to support this, as I'm sure the entire Council is. So, Council, with no further discussion, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next item on our agenda is another presentation, and this is to adopt a resolution designating the month of June 2021 as Pride Month in the city of Sterling Heights. We have a presentation from Leah Mitchell, member of the Sterling Heights Community Alliance. Ms. Mitchell.
Can you see me over this? Thank you, Mr. Mayor, City Council, City Manager, for having me. Some of you might be wondering, what does this resolution really mean for our residents? Is it just a performative act that checks off a box? Is it just a polite effort at appeasing the younger progressives in our city? I want to take a minute to share with you what this resolution really means to me personally. My name is Leah Mitchell, and I am a lifelong resident of Sterling Heights. I am also the chairperson of the city's brand-new Community Alliance Commission. I grew up in Sterling Heights, graduated from Stevenson, graduated from Central Michigan University, and then came home to marry my husband and start our family. Initially, we wanted to live somewhere hip, like Ferndale or Berkeley, but we had a really hard time leaving Sterling Heights. Growing up, I appeared to be a normal, happy kid. I was president of the student council, a member of the service squad, on the high school dance team. I had a weekend job, hung out with a really large group of friends, and went to football games on Friday nights. I tried extra hard at appearing perfect. I thought if I outperformed everyone around me, I could quiet the whispers behind my back. Like many kids, my parents divorced when I was in elementary school. Unlike other kids, my parents ended their marriage with love and friendship, and my mother was free to begin her relationship with another woman. Although a lot to process for a 12-year-old, it was pretty straightforward. My dad moved about a mile away, and we spent a ton of time together as a family. What I never saw coming was the response of the adults around me. Suddenly, I was being cornered by school secretaries, asking me inappropriate personal questions about who spends the night at my home. I was uninvited to birthday parties and to sleepovers. One morning, I woke up to our neighborhood kid writing homophobic slurs in the snow in our front lawn. The vice principal at my junior high school would not help me when I came to her about bullying, and my boyfriend's parents treated me like a pariah. You can see why I tricked myself into believing that if I appeared perfect, no one could fault my mother's lifestyle choices, and no one would be able to judge us. Okay, you want to be cruel because I'm being raised by a lesbian. I will prove every single one of you wrong. Keeping up this appearance was absolutely exhausting, and quite frankly, it was not my job. Instead of proving a point to everyone around me, I should have just been enjoying being a kid. The one group of people I could rely on were my friends, most of whom, who had never met a gay person in their life, accepted and loved me with open arms. My friends stuck up for me, they protected me, and they did their best to shield me from hate. It was the youth of Sterling Heights that embraced me, and thankfully, those youth have now grown up. The historically white, middle-class Christian community of Sterling Heights is changing. If you visit one of our parks, attend the farmer's market, or just take a walk around your neighborhood, you cannot deny that there is a literal rainbow of people in our city: black, white, Middle Eastern, gay, straight, trans. Everyone is choosing to call our city home. Last summer, we put our house up for sale and swore we were moving west. We wanted more diversity, more inclusion, wanted to raise our son in a community where he didn't look like everyone else in his classroom. We spent hours in houses in Royal Oak, Huntington Woods, and Ferndale, but it never felt right. One day, while picking up my son from preschool, I looked around me. His school was filled with diverse children from every type of family structure you could think of. I thought we needed to leave Sterling Heights, but everything I was searching for was directly in front of me. We shifted our search, and we promptly purchased our second Sterling Heights home. The days of seeking out the white picket fence with the perfect, white-only neighbors are ending. I'm so proud of my generation and my peers that are changing the game. We might still want the white picket fence, but we are begging for diversity in our neighborhoods and schools. I can talk to my son about kindness and inclusion until I'm blue in the face, but if everyone around him looks, sounds, and acts exactly like him, it will be a lost cause. It has always been my dream that families would seek out Sterling Heights because we have a reputation for kindness, compassion, and encouraging differences. Adopting the Pride Month resolution is one of the numerous actions by Mayor Taylor and the Sterling Heights City Council that is changing the narrative for our city. If you would have told 12-year-old me that one day I would attend my mother's wedding at Sterling Heights City Hall, or that I would be the chairperson of the Community Alliance Commission, I never would have believed you. Here's a quick picture of us at my mom's wedding. We are right in the basement of City Hall. It's one of my most favorite pictures. This is my husband and my brother. It was a super happy day. Families that look like mine have historically have been told we should be ashamed, or that we should hide in the shadows, and that we don't deserve to feel welcome. Declaring June Pride Month in Sterling Heights is so much more than a polite gesture. It is one of the many ways that we can tell our LGBTQ neighbors that in Sterling Heights, they need not hide. They have chosen to live in a city that will honor, support, welcome, and protect them, that here, unconditional love and inclusion is the rule and not the exception. I know for a fact what an immense impact that would have had on the scared, isolated, and anxious little girl of my past. To some, this resolution may seem small, trivial, or unnecessary. To me, it's a moment 20 years in the making. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and City Council, for helping to create a city that I feel so proud to call my home.
Thank you very much, Ms. Mitchell. All right, Council, again, we have a suggested action.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Radke.
Resolved to adopt a resolution designating the month of June 2021 as Pride Month in the city of Sterling Heights.
Support. It's been moved and supported. Any discussion? Mr. Radke.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Ms. Mitchell, what a touching story, and thank you so much for being willing to share it with us. You know, I don't think Sterling Heights is changing as much as just growing and diversifying and really becoming a place that I've always talked about, a place for everyone. You know, I came from Detroit, moved here when I was 13, and it's always been my home now. And every day, I think the city gets better. Earlier today, I got met with a series of leaders of local groups, and I couldn't stop talking about how all the great things we're doing here in Sterling Heights. And the Community Alliance is obviously doing great things, and I thank you so much for your chairmanship and for sharing that with us. And I'm proud to vote for this resolution because everyone should be welcome here. Everyone is welcome here, and I'm happy to see that our city is growing and just doing so wonderful. So thank you so much for sharing that with us. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Mrs. Zarco.
Thank you, Mayor Taylor. Mrs. Mitchell, I have to tell you that your presentation was exceptional, and I'm certainly proud of the fact that you're a chairperson of this community alliance. Recently, I heard a phrase that was called recovering perfectionist, and I think in your story, you certainly made that point, and how you recovered from being a perfectionist, you accepted yourself and everything around you. I'm really proud that you came here today and shared your story. It's a great one. It's a great one, and so many other families in the city of Sterling Heights have a similar story. And for you to bring that out, I think, helps everybody. So I can't thank you enough. I'm proud of the fact that you're chairperson of this commission, and keep up with the good work. Thank you.
Council, anyone else? Yeah, I want to just echo that again. We had two great presentations tonight that really helped put in perspective what an incredible community we have, very diverse community, community of all different races, religions, ethnicities, creeds, and we work so well together. Our community is thriving. I wouldn't say despite those differences, but because of them. And I'm encouraged by you coming and telling your story, and I hope it inspires other people. I know it has inspired me. I also want to say I'm proud to be a part of this council. You talked a little bit about your generation being more accepting, but I want to give kudos to this council, which is an intergenerational, you know, multi-generational council. And, you know, I've been around for almost 12 years now, and I remember when Councilman Skinnerz and I brought the idea of a nondiscrimination ordinance up, and, you know, the way Mayor Nady looked at it at first was like, he even said, he said, "Taylor, you know, you go looking for issues. You should just let the issues come to you." And, but by the end, he gave one of the most impassioned speeches at that meeting back in 2014 that I'll never forget. And I'm proud of all of my colleagues on this council and our leadership team in the city that's made a deliberative effort to make sure we do everything we can to make everybody in this city feel welcome. So stories like yours today lead me to believe that we're hitting those goals. And I know there's a lot more work to be done, and we're going to continue doing that work. So thank you very much. Council, without any further discussion, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you again very much, both of you, for being here. That will move on to the next item on our agenda, which is an ordinance adoption, and this is to consider adoption of a tax exemption ordinance providing for payment of service charges in lieu of real property taxes for the Van Dyke Apartments residential housing located at 43700 Van Dyke, 43720 Van Dyke, and 43750 Van Dyke. I know the petitioners in the audience, any comments you want to make, or do you want to just wait if there's questions?
Wait.
Okay. Sounds very good. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak on this item? Mr. Smith.
This item is an insult to every taxpayer, property owner, and legitimate businessman in Sterling Heights. Luke Bonner, our highly-paid tax break jockey, has really exceeded himself on this one. He routinely gives his usual half-price deal to billionaire outside investors who could easily pay their fair share of taxation. Meanwhile, retirees, homeowners, renters pay 100% of our very high local tax package. City Council chanced that our taxes are very, very low. If our taxes are so low, why do high-profit businessmen need a half-price deal? The prices, I guess our taxes are okay if you're on minimum wage or social security, but you're running a big business, you need half-price. This housing project is totally tax-free. Based on the city's E-PAC, at the current tax rate, your tax bill should be $90,000 a year. But in lieu of the $90,000, they pay a token contribution capped at $12,000. There's no promise that the complex formula will ever even hit the $12,000. But it's a sure thing that the assessed value in the millage rates will go up, driving up the fair market value sky-high, just like the taxes on your property. But the $12,000 lid is set in stone. Other businesses in Sterling Heights have to buy acreage, landscape it, maintain it, insure it, and pay tax on it for the sole purpose to comply with setback. But this special case is building right up to the sidewalk, overshadowing other businesses. It's a mockery to people who, for 52 years, have complied with the codes and ordinance to let in a substandard, high-density housing project like this. Building this project right up to the sidewalk is a ripoff for every property owner who has complied with the ordinances. Along with hundreds of others, I own land that backs up on the Clinton River. Others have waterway and floodplain lots on Red Run, Plum Brook, Sunny Brook, and Spring Brook. Our backyards flood every year. We can't build anything of value outback, but we own the land and pay the tax. This so-called donation of their backyard is an obvious tax evasion scheme that cannot be tolerated. Will everybody that backs up to a river be able to donate their backyard floodplain to the city for a tax break? I don't plan to donate mine, but the door's open for anybody that wants to. Again, I'm all for development. Go ahead and develop it. But the reason we develop property is so that we can charge tax on it and not give away the city for nothing. I know that this deal is passed, and that you won't back down on this, and you're going to give this guy everything that Luke Bonner promised to give him. But fortunately, although I'm not running for city council, 18 other people are, and the people do have a recourse against this kind of an insult to the taxpayers of Sterling Heights. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Smith. Anyone else on this item? If not, Council, we need a motion?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Yanis.
Resolved to adopt the city of Sterling Heights, excuse me, adopt the city of Sterling Heights tax exemption ordinance providing for payment of service charges in lieu of real property taxes for the proposed Van Dyke Apartments residential housing located at 43700 Van Dyke, 43720 Van Dyke, and 43750 Van Dyke, and approve the municipal services agreement between the city of Sterling Heights and the CCF Development LDH LLC, and authorize the mayor and city clerk to sign the agreement on behalf of the city.
Support.
It's been moved and supported. Any discussion? Mr. Yanis?
No, I just think that we've gone over the future of North Van Dyke many, many times. Now, we did at the last particular meeting. This is the first investment into what will hopefully be a newly-developed part of Sterling Heights. So I think this is a very important development, and hopefully things go the way that we hoped them to go. And so therefore, I think this is going to be a good project that's going to kick everything off, so I fully support this project.
All right, thank you, Mr. Yanis. I think it might have been Mrs. Zarco.
Thank you. I think we did cover this at the, thank you, Mayor Taylor. At our last meeting, we've talked about this, but I also want to know if Mr. Bonner would like to say anything regarding the comments that were made tonight? Easy. I can't see him from here if he's...
Mr. Bonner?
He's coming.
Do you have any response?
I don't think it's generally worth a response, but thank you for offering that opportunity.
All right. So yes, I think this is a great project, and it certainly is the beginning of what we hoped to be, you know, an even better project in this corridor. So thank you for having even the courage to go through with this, because I know you have made your plans over and over and over again in order to suit the city as well as the development. So thank you again for having faith in this project, because we have a faith in you.
Mr. Radke.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just briefly, I will take Mr. Smith up on his offer. If any resident of the city wants to donate some land for us to create a better greenway and park along the Clinton River, you can email me right at City Hall, mradke@sterling-highs.net, because I think that what the Caldian Community Foundation is doing is wonderful. It's going to create a bikeway and greenway, hopefully connecting our new urban downtown district that we're hoping to create on North Van Dyke. This meets, some of the statements that were made were just factually inaccurate, but this meets the code. We rezone North Van Dyke for mixed use. This is part of our overall plan to make North Van Dyke a hub of activity where hopefully you don't have to use your car. It's going to take a little bit of time. Things are going to change a little bit in these areas, but this is going to be a wonderful development. It also helps us with affordable housing. When I knocked on doors in Sterling Heights, one of the biggest concerns I heard from residents was, "There's not enough affordable housing. My son wants to live here," or "My family wants to live here, but we can't find a house or a house at a fair price." So a pilot enables us to do that. That's why we're doing this. It's not a giveaway. It's not because Martin shook our hand in the back room and said, "This is a great deal." You know, the Michigan Housing Development Corporation had to get involved in this, because we want to make sure that there are residents available for people of every income level in Sterling Heights. The people aren't being priced out and sent away. So I just find it very frustrating when people come up here and attack a multimillion-dollar project, which is going to turn a bunch of vacant lots into, hopefully, the anchor of a future downtown district, and they insult it. So I am happy to support this. I'm happy to argue it out with anyone, and if you want to donate some land to the city to help create a park, come see me. I'll take it. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Ms. Kosky.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through the chair to Mr. Bonner, please. I would like you to come up and just reemphasize a couple of things to make sure that the people listening at home understand exactly what this program is all about. Water and sewer. According to the agreement, water and sewer was mentioned. Exactly who pays for any water and sewer connection? connection?
Um, yeah. To that, to your question specifically, the, um, Caldean Community Foundation still has to pay all applicable permits and fees related to the development. Um, this agreement is specifically related to, um, the ad valorem property tax that they would pay, um, because this is an affordable housing development, uh, which means that they are offering lease rates for their apartments lower than market rates, and lease rates that are more conducive to lower income, um, that this is typically done across the state of Michigan, actually, across the country, that a payment in lieu of taxes helps offset those lower rents, so that that apartment is available for a lower-income individual.
And this pilot program ends when the mortgage ends. Now, the mortgage is MISTDA, correct?
Um, MISTDA would hold the mortgage on this correct.
And when that mortgage is paid off, doesn't the pilot program end?
Um, you know, I'm not exactly sure of that technical aspect of it, to be honest with you, Councilman Kosky, so I'm afraid that I really can't offer a straight answer without doing more research on it.
I believe it does. But, uh, we'll leave it up there as a question. Um, school and county, are they affected by this?
For the payment in lieu of tax, um, figure, uh, which is the $12,200 figure, uh, which of course would then grow, um, over time as well, uh, that number is actually divided equally among the tax jurisdictions, so that they would get their equal pro-rata share of that $12,200.
Okay. So everybody gets a little bit. And if, uh, I recall, it's 1% or a minimum of $12,000?
Uh, correct.
Okay. Plus, we're getting another $20,000?
About $20,000 in real property taxes based on the commercial portion of the project. Then I'd also like to point out, too, that, um, this is in the Corridor Improvement Authority District, uh, which is a tax increment finance authority. Um, that district captures all properties, real property tax growth in that area, and it has been since 2008, and it will for the next 10 years also. Um, so any real property tax revenue generated in this district goes to the Corridor Improvement Authority, um, which then in turn can be invested back into the district as well. Um, so this money, um, even if this were a, a typical ad valorem property tax situation, those tax dollars would go to the Corridor Improvement Authority for public improvements in that district, um, to begin with. And then I would mention also that property's been vacant for about 3.8 billion years. There's nothing ever been built on it.
Well, I think it might have a few fish there or something. Seriously, uh, the property in the back, isn't it required that they donate the property?
So the Caldean Community Foundation will donate, um, the leftover acreage, whatever that ends up being, that they, they cannot use for the development, uh, which we will then take and master plan for future park improvements, um, that would support the vision, the future vision of the Corridor Improvement Authority District.
Okay. Um, the property that they're building on is all solid ground. They're not going to have to do any draining. Is that correct?
Uh, so, there is some, you know, pretty sophisticated engineering they have to do anyways on that, because there is floodway and a floodplain. Um, they have to manage the floodplain in order to develop on it. It's a cut-and-fill process, so anything they cut, um, soil-wise from that property, they'll have to fill also, uh, to compensate for that. Uh, and the floodway itself can't be developed in. So the majority of the property that we're going to be receiving as a donation is property that can't be developed on anyways.
But it's not going to be, um, underwater, correct?
Correct.
Okay. So it'll be something that we can use, and it's not going to be greatly expensive for us to put it into park land. Is that correct?
Correct.
I think that's all. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Kosky.
Mayor Taylor.
Mr. Schmidt.
Thank you. Mr. Bonner? Sorry about that. Through the chair. Um, Mr. Bonner, this is not the first pilot program we have here in the city. In fact, just a few weeks ago, we approved another one. How many do we have in the city? Do you have any idea?
Um, I can't answer that question, but I can find out.
It's more than two.
More than two? Yeah, I'm assuming we probably have four or five.
Okay. So this is not something new. This is, this is not something new. Um, and the, um, petitioner is going to be paying for their, um, municipal service fee, covers their police, fire, DPW, and everything else, correct?
Correct. And don't forget, this is a nonprofit foundation that's developing this property, uh, for the purpose of providing housing to, um, a lower-income individual.
Right. And that municipal service fee is guaranteed money, correct?
That is money that would come directly to the city.
Yes. Okay. Um, that's all I have. Thank you. I think, I think this is a, a good project. It's a good utilization of some property that, um, in the past has had nothing on it for many, many years. And it's a, almost a, what, $29 million project? So, um, this isn't chump change, and, you know, the, the retail that's going to be on the, the bottom level will also capture taxes as well. So it's not totally tax-free, um, and I think it's, um, a good asset for the community and our lower-income folks that are looking for good housing. So, thank you. I have nothing further.
Thank you, Ms. Schmidt. Um, so just to, I think, answer Ms. Kosky's que- question, in the agreement, it says that the duration will last as long as there's a mortgage loan outstanding and unpaid, or the property is otherwise eligible for a pilot pursuant to applicable law. So it could, could be longer potentially. Um, what I want to do is just emphasize something Mr. Bonner said, that this is not, uh, this is not a situation where you have some wealthy developer coming in, making a deal to put in high-rent luxury condos or apartments and getting a tax break. This is a deal where we're going to have affordable housing units for people who can't otherwise afford market rent in Sterling Heights, and they're going to be paying based on, uh, a payment in lieu of their taxes. But there's still a payment, and the city is going to be made close to hold, because they're going to be paying, uh, as was mentioned, uh, for those, uh, municipal services that will be required to be provided to them. So, uh, this is, uh, to me, this is a tremendous development. It's going to be, hopefully, the cornerstone of what turns out to be a really vibrant, dynamic, almost downtown area in the next 15 to 20 years, hopefully. This could be a transformational area for the city of Sterling Heights. And so, um, I certainly support it. I think the Caldean Community Foundation has a track record of, uh, doing things very well in this city, and doing it for the right reasons. Opening their doors to help people, helping people who are most vulnerable, uh, helping thousands and thousands of people every week to make sure that they're, uh, they're getting the services that they need. And so, I'm more than, uh, willing to give the benefit of the doubt to the Caldean Community Foundation and Mr. Martin. But I really don't have to, because I'm, I have no doubt that this project will be, uh, great. So I'm enthusiastically in support of it. Counsel, with, uh, no further discussion, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thank you. Congratulations. Mr. Manah, good luck. Thank you, Mr. Bonner, for your, uh, thoughtful responses. Uh, with that, we'll move on to the next item on our agenda, which is the consent agenda. Is there anyone who wishes to speak on any item on tonight's consent agenda? Mr. Smith.
Well, there's 13 items on the consent agenda. Consent agenda's completely gone wild. Uh, it was supposed to be for routine bills and approvals of minutes. Now we have billions of dollars' worth of items that are supposedly not worth discussing. I'll stick with items G and H tonight. This is almost $12 million issue, involved in water tax-related spending. Our so-called water bills are used to collect money that should come from general fund millage. The county drain commissioner's annual sewage levy is a flat rate charged against the property of Ster- against the city of Sterling Heights, which is dispersed along with other flat rate fees into a so-called water bill. In reality, your outrageous water bill is only about 30% water, and it's 70% things that have no business being on the water bill. Item G is to hire a Madison Avenue huckster, an ad man, a henchman for the city manager, to come in to do a sell job for even higher water bills. $30,000 for an advertising campaign. He must be a pretty good ad man for only $30,000 to, to front for a $50 million a year collection agency. So the mayor, the city council, the city managers, city employees are so ashamed of this, they can't even face the, the, uh, people themselves. They have to bring in an ad man to sell in the higher water bill. The rest of the $12 million is for water smart meters. These are like the DT electric meters that the people fought. Uh, instead of hiring a city employee to go around and check water bills every three months, now they'll be monitored probably from a monitoring station in Pakistan or the Philippines. And just like the electric bills, they can charge at premium rates for using water at premium times, which are yet to be defined, and you have no way of knowing where it was a premium time. Just be electric. Just like the electric smart meters, a new way to gouge you on water bills. Like the electric smart meters, by your water flow, they'll be able to know how and when to use water. I don't know really who, who really wants to know if you wash the car, or flush the toilet, or do the dishes. But I'm sure, just like the electric bills, they'll use the water metering, uh, system to, uh, invade your privacy. They can shut off your water by remote control, just like DTE can with your electric bill. But the key difference is that DTE is the biggest and most powerful force in the state of Michigan. DTE is bigger than the state government, and the people had no cha- no choice, no ability to fight DTE, and the smart electric meters went in. But city council is not DTE. You're seven people that are up for election, and fortunately, there's 18 people on the ballot to replace you. The people are already up in arms about water bills. Now, smart meters on water and hiring a consultant to, uh, to sell an even higher water bill? Well, you really screwed up by mentioning this before the August 3rd primary. So, there's nothing I can do about it, but there's a lot the voters can do about it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Anyone else on the consent agenda? If not, counsel, we need a motion.
Mr. Mayor.
Mrs. Kosky.
Move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Support.
It's been moved and supported with no discussion. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Next item on our agenda tonight is to consider nominations the city of Sterling Heights boards and commissions. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak on this item? Okay. If not, we have a few boards. Uh, the first one is the planning commission. This is a mayoral appointment to term ending June 30, 2024. There are three nominees. All are current members of the board, and all are seeking reappointment. However, I would like to nominate two of the current board members for, uh, reappointment. And respectfully thank Mr. Donald Miller for his many years of service. But at this time, I would like to, uh, request the appointment of Jeffrey Garapi, and Pashka Wekai, and John Myers III to the planning commission, to terms ending June 30th, 2024. And so, we can take all three at the same time, and I would appreciate a council member who would make those nominations. Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Radke. On the advice of the mayor, resolve to nominate Jeffrey Garapi, Pashka Wekai, and John Myers III for consideration as an appointee to the planning commission at the June 1st, 2021, regular city council meeting.
Support. It's been moved and supported. Any discussion? Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Radke. I just want to say the three, uh, well, two of the appointees have already served on the planning commission, and I think that they are exemplary appointments. Uh, Mr. Garapi has done a great job as the planning chairman, and, uh, Pashka Wekai is chair of the ZBA and the, the, uh, liaison between the organizations. I just wanted to also say, I personally know John Myers III. He's a member of our African-American Coalition. I think he might be on the Corridor Improvement Authority, or?
Brownfield.
Brownfield Authority. And, uh, he's just a wonderful local businessman who has given everything he can to the city. You know, he's, he's been a community person, just making suggestions. He's very strongly supportive, doing something for the Martha King holiday. I think he'll be an excellent nominee, and he'll also bring diversity to that board. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor. I, I strongly approve.
Counsel, anyone else on this item? If not, uh, just to, I just want to say, um, Mr. Miller has served, uh, for a long time, I believe, in, in our, for our city, and honorably on our planning commission, and, uh, nothing but, uh, uh, kind words and, and thankful for his service. But at this time, I thought it would be a good opportunity to give somebody else, uh, a chance on that board. I've spoken with a number of people, actually, about the planning commission, um, and, uh, thought long and hard about this decision. And I believe Mr. Myers would be a great addition to, uh, the planning commission, so I respectfully ask for the council's support on that. So no further discussion. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Uh, thank you, counsel. Next is the Board of Ordnance Appeals I. This is a, a board with city council appointment. There are, uh, two openings. Both are requesting reappointment, Mr. Robert Irvin and Ms. Julie Hoff Windhorst, to terms ending June 30th, 2024. Uh, so if there is a council member that would like to make, uh, these nominations, they can both be done at the same time.
Mayor Taylor.
Mrs. Schmidt.
Resolve to nominate Robert Irvin and Julie Hoff Windhorst to the ordinance, uh, ordinance appeals I, um, board at the June 1st, 21st, or, I'm sorry, at the June 1st, 2021, regular city council meeting. Let me rephrase that. I'm sorry.
That's okay. Happens.
Resolve to nominate Robert Irvin, Julie Hoff Windhorst, for consideration as an appointee to the Board of Ordnance Appeals I at the June 1st, 2021, regular city council meeting.
Support.
It's been moved and supported. Any discussion?
I'm very satisfied with the jobs that both of them have been doing, so I have no issue with, um, reappointing.
Counsel, anyone else? With no further discussion, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Next is the Board of Ordnance Appeals II. This is a city council appointment. There are two members requesting reappointment to terms ending June 30, 2024. Counsel, is there anyone that would like to make these nominations? Mr. Mayor. Mr. Radke.
Resolve to nominate, um, Michael Stickney and Stephen Wekai for consideration as an appointee to the Board of Ordnance Appeals II at the June 1st, 2021, regular city council meeting.
Support. It's been moved and supported. Is there any discussion? Mr. Radke.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think both of these appointees have done a very good job on the, uh, the Ordnance Board of Appeals II. So for residents at home, we get packets of information on their attendance and everything. We're checking to make sure everybody's working hard, has a very good record, and I think all of the nominees today have had almost perfect attendance and done a great job. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Radke. Counsel, anyone else? No further discussion. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Next is the Board of Review. Again, two, uh, openings with members seeking reappointment, and this is a city council appointment to terms ending June 30, 2024. Counsel, anyone like to make these nominations?
Mayor Taylor.
Mrs. Sarowski.
Thank you, Mayor Taylor. Resolve, let me just go to where we're going here. Resolve to nominate Mike, I'm sorry, John Hedges and Mona Yazin for consideration as appointee to the Board of Review at the June 1st, 2021, regular city council meeting.
Support.
It's been moved and supported. Is there any discussion?
Um, no, Mayor Taylor. I've, I met up with both of these. They do a fine job. I'd love to, I, I'm happy to reappoint.
Very good. Counsel, anyone else? No further discussion. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Last is the Zoning Board of Appeals. This is, uh, city council appointment to terms ending June 30, 2024, and there are two openings. Counsel, is there anyone, anyone who'd like to make these nominations?
Mayor Taylor.
Mrs. Sarowski.
Resolve to appoint Derek DeAngelo and Pashka Wekai for consideration as appointees to the Zoning Board of Appeals at the June 1st, 2021, regular city council meeting.
Support. It's been moved and supported. Any discussion?
Um, no. Um, well, just very, very briefly. Again, these gentlemen have done a fine job. I am very pleased with their service. I've seen many of the ZBA meetings and been to quite a few of them, so I'm happy to reappoint these as well.
Thank you, Ms. Sarowski. Counsel, anyone else? No further discussion. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. That completes that portion of our agenda. We'll move on now to communications from citizens. Is there anyone in the audience who'd like to speak on any item that was not on tonight's agenda? on any item that was not on tonight's agenda? Ms. Inks?
Mr. Mayor, thank you and good evening to you, counsel and city administration. Over the past several weeks, I attended the Citizens Police Academy. I just wanted to come and publicly thank Sergeant Susala, Chief Dwojekowski, the police department as a whole, and the city administration for making that program possible. I learned a lot about the police department, and I think it was a great way for the citizens and the residents of Sterling Heights to maintain an open dialogue with the police department. So just wanted to come and say publicly, thank you for that.
Thank you very much, sir. Anyone else on communications from citizens? Mr. Smith?
I hate to, hate to do the majority of the speaking tonight, but apparently the majority of the people have decided council just doesn't listen and they don't bother to speak. Last council meeting, I saw on television, I watched it several times. It was a real circus, and I found it very enjoyable and entertaining. At least there was some discussion among city council rather than the usual seven-to-nothing voice vote. There was a tax increase buried in the budget, but apparently it wasn't buried deep enough. This would have been the sixth or seventh tax increase in the last decade, and it was really a minimal tax increase compared to the 1.9 and 2.5 and 2.5 renewals that got imposed on us by hook or crook. But there's 18 candidates on the August 3 ballot, and this seems to have gotten the attention of some of the incumbents. I noticed that five council members took a stand to refuse the tax hike, survive the election, and raise the tax in December, once they were home free for another four years. Strangely, from what I see on the tape, three council members actually mentioned raising taxes in December after the election was in their pocket. That was a bit of strange political strategy or a mistake, anyway. They might as well have raised it in May, as promised to raise it in December, because effectively it's raised anyway. Two council members dug in their heels and demanded every penny right now without compromise. No compromise, no consensus, just every fraction of a mill we want right now. We're not bending. Clearly, these two do not fear the will of the people. Guess they think they can't be beat. Maybe they feel they can take the city election, same way as Biden. Maybe the two that wanted the tax increase actually do feel, fear the will of the people and think they might lose their liberal majority and not be able to raise it in December. And that's a very good possibility. I, I hope that happens, because there's enough people on the ballot to, to get some new faces on city council. I know four of you were here for me, and you're still here. Some of you have served four times the presidential time limit already. Somebody, somebody here will be 32 years if she wins this election. I know when I was on city council, you thought I was your only problem, but like Sonia Friedman says, if you think you've only got one problem, you're wrong. And I'm not on the ballot, but you got 11 other problems, and we'll see. August 3.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Smith. Anyone else under, come on up?
Hi there. Kelly Skilin, I'm a Sterling Heights resident. I want to start off by complimenting, actually, the current council, which I know is probably unusual, but this council has done a lot towards diversity in the past year, year and a half, creating the Community Alliance, creating the African-American Coalition. The monument markers now support core values like inclusivity, and even the resolution designating June as Pride Month recognizes that Sterling Heights will not realize its vision of being a vibrant and inclusive community unless all of its residents feel safe, welcome, and accepted. This is in line with what's happening around our country. Polls indicate that 75 to 80% of Americans support laws that protect LGBTQ folks against discrimination. Five of our nine comparable cities have nondiscrimination ordinances on the books. Despite this support, the Elliott Larson Act has still not been expanded to include sexual orientation or gender identity. The Supreme Court decision in Bostock versus Clayton City applies only to employment discrimination, and the Federal Equality Act is unlikely to make it out of the Senate. So I only have one question. Is Sterling Heights City Council willing to reconsider the anti-discrimination ordinance for LGBTQ people? Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Skilin. Anyone else under communications? Yes?
Good evening. My name is Shania Shehab. I'm a resident of Sterling Heights, and in July, I reached out to Councilwoman Sarrowsky and offered to do a free LGBT sensitivity training to any council individuals that were interested. I didn't get any response back at that time, but I'm hoping with the recommendation that was adopted tonight that maybe some people would still be interested in, in having that training. I could work with the Community Alliance to set that up as well, but I've been leading those, those trainings for over nine years, and that is, is something that I would like to offer to any of the council members that would like to take it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else?
Hi, counsel. My name is Benjamin Orjada. I'd just like to speak in favor of an adoption of an ordinance to protect those LGBTQ residents of the city. It's a matter that's very close to heart, very important to me, and while having a, a month of pride to support these people is a good start, I think that an ordinance would go a much greater step forward in doing more than just doing lip service on the subject. Thank you so much for everything you've done so far. I'd like to see us go that next step in protecting our community and really making, you know, Sterling Heights an amazing place. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else under communications from citizens? Not, I'll close that portion of our meeting, and we'll move on to reports from city administration. Mr. Vanderpoel, anything for tonight?
Nothing further, Mayor. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Vanderpoel. Mr. Kachubski?
Nothing tonight, Mayor. Thank you.
Okay, counsel, I'll open it up for reports, new business. Mr. Radke.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, I, I was looking through our packet today, and I just wanted to point something out to both my colleagues and the folks at home. You know, this budget that we adopted this year that I strenuously object to took some money from the reserves we were going to put into our major roads fund. And items I and J in the Consent Agenda, they use reserves from our, our major road fund to do more repairs because we got a very good deal on concrete from our contractors. We were able to, to fix more, but we had to dip into our, our road reserves just slightly to a tune of about $300,000, I want to say, or $400,000, to make sure we, all the repairs got made. And this year, we cut the amount of money we put into those reserves. So while we can do this this year, with the way that the budget was situated, in future years, we might not be able to. And I think that that was what the mayor and I were talking about when the budget was adopted, that by making these cuts, they're not really cuts, they're deferments. Eventually, we're going to have to put more money into those reserves to make sure we can make the repairs and keep the quality of life people here expect. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Radke. Anyone else, counsel? Okay, just, just very briefly, you know what? Never mind. I'm not going to. I want to thank everyone for coming out tonight, participating, and I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved, support.
Removed and supported. No discussion. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. This meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everyone.